Good evening, everyone. We call a meeting to order. George, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hamus?
Yes.
Howley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, are there any changes or amendments to this evening's agenda? Not, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Items we have approval of minutes from the March 11th meeting. We have approval of a liquor license for the Fairfield Golf and Country Club, and approval of claims of the amount of $118,868.57. Are there any questions regarding these items? Not entertain a motion to approve? Moved by Hamilton to approve, seconded by Boyer. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Howley?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Hamus?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, we'll move on to our appearances before the council. And the first this evening is Anthony Fisher. Is Anthony here?
Yes.
Just come up to the microphone, please. Anthony, you have a property at 400 North D Street?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And the issue is that the new medians for the quiet zone are inhibiting your new vehicle from getting out?
Yeah, it's... We've always had a camper, and we can't... There's no way to get a camper in and out of the driveway now. The median just blocks it. There's not enough angle there.
So you're on the south side of D Street?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
And it's a... Our car had broke down one time even, and Fred Macbeth pulled it in on the back of a strength truck, and he was 20, 25 minutes getting into the driveway. And during this whole time, you know, the traffic stopped, people stopped right on the tracks and everything. It's, I don't know what to do. You know, it's... I can't get in and out.
Okay.
When the snow goes by, it used to be you'd be able to get a little run and hit straight on, and that, their option's gone now, too. You gotta go in there, and we get stuck. And once again, traffic stops on the railroad tracks. I mean, it sucks that bad's gonna happen one of these days.
Were you... Did you ever meet with any of the engineers? Were... I guess I'm just asking this question whether that was part of our process while we were planning the...
Actually, it's... Darrell was out there measuring. This is in the early stages of planning with, I believe, French Renneke. And when I asked where the median was gonna come to, it was... I was told that it was gonna come to the north edge of my driveway and stop right there. But as you can see, it extends way on past my driveway.
Okay.
And I don't know whether they told that there just they wouldn't complain about it, or had planned to change, or what, but I couldn't get in and out.
What do you see that would fix it? Is there anything from your property's side that cutting the curb more, or anything like that?
Yeah, I think that there's probably the only reasonable thing to do, is I know you ain't gonna remove the median. I mean, that'd be the best thing. But come in, maybe give me a little bit more angles to get in and out. I mean, it's just too tight. Another thing is, I called about it right afterwards, and I believe it was the Commission for the Quiet Zone, that's who I talked to, and they said, "Well, it's mandatory for the median be 100 foot." Well, on my side of the tracks, it's 100 foot, and on the other side of the track, it's 53 foot. You know, I don't know where they come up with that at.
Yeah, it's 60 feet on the north side. The FRA guidelines are very strict, and if it's a multi-use driveway, like they have over on the north side, then you can have shorter than 100 feet. But for residential driveways, that's not a reason that they allow us to shorten it. So it's Virginia Apartments on the north side that allow them. And you were told, because the FRA originally sent our application back, they switched those two medians, and we had to get them to do an amendment. They had put 60 on the south, 100 on the north, and then we had them amend it. So if you were told 60, it's because someone looked at the plans. And I remember the first draft of the plan showed 60 on your side, and I said to French Renneke, "That's not right," and we got it straightened out. So I apologize for that. It was always supposed to be 100 on your side. But I'm glad you have an idea of what to do to fix it.
Oh, yes. That's the most reasonable thing, is put it in an alleyway? I don't know. You know, it seems like everybody else that's got median going blocking their driveway does have an alleyway where they have an option of getting in and out. But for me, I'm just kinda stuck.
I just wanna ask Darrell. Darrell, have you taken a look at that area and at the driveway, and anything that you see as a remedy?
I don't think it's a possibility to do anything with the median, because it's already been approved, and I think if you do anything like that. So probably what Anthony's saying is to get another flume out that way and get him out further in that direction, as far as to the south. I don't know. It could get hard to go to the north.
Yeah, it's ain't no way to go to the north, I don't think.
No, probably have to extend it on out and form some concrete out there so it places industry's driving wider.
Okay. Could we have... Darrell, could you look at that with Kevin and see if there's... With Mr. Fisher, and see if there's anything that we can help him with, with a remedy there? Okay? So we'll be in touch with you this week to set up an appointment to take a look at it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry for the inconvenience. Okay. Next, we have Joanne Katz, who would like to address the council about the train whistles, the ones that are still blowing occasionally.
Thank you very much. So I noticed the last two months that the train whistles had increased from barely blowing from November to the end of January, and then starting at the end of January to last weekend, or this past week, increasing, increasing. And I realized, Michael pointed out, that the last two weeks of this two-month period that there was a lot of construction, and that was one of the reasons. So thank you very much, Michael. And then today, it appeared, there was only one. And before that, for the last two months, there were three or four, sometimes five whistles a day.
Joanne, where do you live?
I live on Low and D. And so what Michael also pointed out was that just recently, in the last maybe week or so, a new regional representative was appointed, and hadn't... There hadn't been one for the last two months. So maybe he's had some input, and I also understand that the city, or the mayor, or somebody, sent a letter to the railroad, you know, sort of mentioning that we're concerned about this. I didn't see a copy of that letter. What I would wanna know is, if it continues, I'd like to start monitoring and doing some, you know, very specific time and directional verification of trains, if they're blowing their whistle or not, throughout the day. And I... My thinking has evolved. And if I were to do this, would you want me to present it to you as a city council, and for information of that nature to come from you rather than from a private citizen? Or would you rather have a private citizen complain to the railroad?
Yeah, I don't know whether... Michael, if you could answer this, whether they have someone that citizens could talk to directly?
Yeah, there is a...
Well, he did mention that to me, but I felt a little uncomfortable that he mentioned that there is a railroad board, or something like that. And so I just wanted to have some verification that this was the action that the city of Fairfield wanted, was for private citizens to do. I don't mind doing the research, you know, and doing that.
Well, I think it's hard, you know, it's really hard to, for them... I would... I guess we'd have to talk to them about it, but as you understand, there are legitimate reasons why.
Yeah, I mean, that's not...
And then you have to compare each of those incidences to whether they actually had somebody on the tracks or not.
Right.
And if they didn't, what, you know, what's the result there?
Yes. No, no, I'm fully aware that there are many reasons why they would be honking their horn. It's just what I can't understand is, for two months, there was no honking.
Yeah.
And then for two months, there was really a lot. And then today, there's none. So I... There's... It's just a variation that is, you know, confusing to me. And I'm not... I don't wanna just blindly accept that there's nothing.
Counsel, any comments or concerns? I know I have a... My day job, I have an office that's a half a block from the tracks, and I don't hear any whistles. We hear you really occasionally, and what you do hear is not what we used to hear. What we used to hear were the four blasts for every stop, and there were nine of them, and, you know, that's so many. But now, it's just, it's an incidental short toot to basically warn someone, so I know that they're probably legitimate doing that. There isn't anybody coming through who has forgotten it's a quiet zone and is blowing the whistle four times at each stop?
One or two.
There are?
Yeah. And Matt, just to give you a little history, when we first had a quiet zone established, I was doing exactly what you were doing. I was noting the time, the direction, and sending an email to my representative at the railroad company. And after two days, he asked me to stop doing that. He said, "You know, it's a big company, and it takes a little while to get information passed down the line." So I backed off. And then I talked to my rep at the FRA, who's kinda the authority, you know, who's, if anyone can do anything, it's the FRA. They are not concerned with the occasional train horn. Their concern is safety at the tracks. So they basically put the responsibility back on the city and said, "Well, if you can educate your citizens to..." So no one's trespassing, meaning walking on the tracks, or going around the gatearm, which can still happen in some places, then you'll hear less horns." So they basically put it back in our lap. And that's been their attitude even till last week. I met with a representative from the railroad company and FRA, came to town last Wednesday. They met with the superintendent of local schools and all the principals, gave them a, it's called Operation Lifesaver, presentation. It's all about railway safety, mostly focusing on kids. And they wanna do those presentations in the schools, and this is just something that we can do to educate people. Don't walk on the tracks, don't try to race through the gate when it's closed, et cetera. So it's like Ed said, it's really hard to quantify exactly or qualify why a train was using its horn. We don't know if there are deer moving across the tracks, or stray dogs, or people, but they will use the horn in those instances, and then by law, they have to use the horn whenever there are railroad workers on the tracks. That's also by law. So if anyone noticed last week, as they're moving through town during the day, like Ed said, it's a little toot. It's not the same.
Can I ask, is that what you're hearing, or are you hearing... Of recent, are you hearing the four blasts per stop straight through town?
I've been hearing...
The occasional...
I would say straight through town, maybe not four at each stop, but maybe... But very similar to the pattern that was before the quiet zone was established.
I've heard it, too. They'll do about three crossings and stop, generally. So again, if you wanna collect that data, there's two things we can do with it. You know, I can compile it and then pass it along in a friendly manner to the railroad company and say, "Hey, here's how your engineers are doing."
Right.
FYI, we think they can do better, but, you know, leave it at that. And then there is a regional public relations person for the railroad company, and I can give you, I think I might have given you her phone number. And that's why I encourage anyone from the public, if they wanna talk to someone, that's her job, is to hear from people. So you can contact...
So I guess I just, you know, at this point, that's what I wanted confirmation, was that, I mean, I could do both, give you the information and also contact her. I mean, I realize that, you know, we're becoming known as a quiet zone city with this article in, you know, in the Smithsonian, and I think it's something that, you know, we... I don't wanna see, you know, sort of get lost in the dust. And, I mean, I must admit, it's not bothering me. It's only sort of on the principle of it, that it's not completely... To me, it's not really representing a quiet zone city, and I guess that's what I wanna aim for. Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Gail Thomas here. Hello, Gail.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to address the city council. I'm a urban and regional planner. I'm a local Fairfield person, class of '74. So I always love coming back to Fairfield and seeing so many people I recognize. And I've been working out of town for four years, and I'm preparing to return home due to my family obligations and that kind of thing. And since I have these skills, I'd like to offer them to the city of Fairfield. I know that you don't have a planner on staff, and haven't had for many years, I believe. I spoke to your city administrator a while back, and he informed me that he takes responsibility for virtually all of the planning tasks, and I'm sure that's working well for you. And there are a couple of things in particular that I'd like to do for Fairfield, so you should have had in your packets this proposal that I submitted. And what I designed to present to you was something that will not cost the city of Fairfield any money necessarily on the front end. There are two particular things that I would enjoy doing, or that interest me, that I'd like to do for Fairfield, one of which is grant writing and administration. I have a lot of experience in that in the four years that I've been working, particularly CDBG grants. I'm also interested, there are frequently grants that come up from places like the DNR or other things that are like sustainability grants and things like that, that you really need a person who is searching for those opportunities and acting on them, you know, in a timely fashion and stuff, that can do those for you. So what I had suggested, if you were interested in utilizing my services as a grant writer and a grant administrator, would be that I'd start out by developing a plan with either the city council or your city administrator, or whoever you chose to work with me on this, to prepare a CDBG grant for application in November. My largest amount of interest or experience is in housing, CDBG, but I also did some grant writing for the city of Atumwam, doing water sewer grants and that kind of thing. You can apply for community facility grants through that program also. I'm less interested in that for a couple of reasons, but one of which is that Fairfield's pretty good on their community facility stuff. You have quite a few active members in the community. You've accomplished quite a few things in that area. My primary interest is in neighborhood redevelopment, housing rehab, that kind of thing, or in water sewer. And I know that Fairfield has so many, you know, virtually every Midwest community has serious, you know, long-term sewer issues. And I'm quite... I have quite a lot of interest in water management, and quite a bit of background in fluvial systems and streams and that kind of thing. So whatever course the city chose to pursue, I'd be really interested in working with you on that. So I've made, you know, a couple of proposals in that regard. The other thing that I thought you might want, that I would really enjoy doing and like to do, is maybe do an update of your comprehensive plan or your master plan. I think it's been quite a while since Fairfield had a master plan completed. I have experience with doing comp planning. I provided an example of a project that my team worked on when I was in grad school at University of Iowa. We did a plan for the city of Moline. I have little hope that that plan will ever be implemented, but I provided it to you as just an example of what a plan could include. It would include, you know, your economics, your labor shed studies, that kind of thing. It would include your demographics and your population trends over the last many decades. It would evaluate the results of the current zoning ordinance that you have been using. And since you've used it for many years, you'd have a body of data now that you could look at and say, "Okay, has this zoning ordinance worked to get us where we wanna go?" And, you know, are there things that we could do with this ordinance that would modernize it? We have a lot of modern zoning ideas, and some better than others. Also, in comprehensive planning, it would involve a lot of community interaction. It would require at least two or three, at least three, meetings where you would invite many members of the community to participate in some strategic planning, some visioning for the community. I think the city of Fairfield already has a good visioning thing going on. There's good vision here. You've accomplished tremendous things, really, without a planner, which, you know, goes to your credit. But I think there's a lot of vision in Fairfield, but maybe it's time to update the supporting components of that, or put that on paper as a policy document for moving forward. So I would really love to do that, in order that you wouldn't have to actually hire me, which I would encourage you to do. But because I would like to work full or part-time for the city, but I realize you're past budget season on that, and you may want to not commit to that. But what I'd like to do, if you were interested in this comprehensive planning and stuff, what we could do is we could set up a system of deliverables, like we could do a certain percentage of the project, present it to the city council, see if it looks like you want to move forward, and then, you know, we could pay on a portion basis, or something like that. Or you could just ask me to complete the project. Then, if you liked it and adopted it, then you could pay me a contracted amount upon adoption of the final product. That way, you're not purchasing an unknown entity. You know, many cities and counties and local governments like to hire regional planning commissions to do this work for them. That makes it difficult for me to become a consultant, because I'm an unknown entity. If I was able to locally offer you these services on a trial basis where you were not committed to purchase the product, it would help me in my professional career. It would be fun. It's something I really wanna do. And, you know, it would be at very low risk for the city.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for me?
Well, Gail, good presentation, and a lot of different options for us. And many of the things that you mentioned, we do have planned. We are planning to do a update of our comprehensive plan. We do have some zoning plans also. We are engaged in some work with CDBG for some of the infrastructure work that we're going to be doing within the city as well. I would invite you to maybe have a sit-down with Kevin and to see if there is something other. And as you well know, the reason that we use the regional planning authorities is economic as well. They generally offer the services at a rate that is subsidized by the membership that a lot of the towns and cities within the region put in on an annual basis. So if it's more competitive than what they're doing, we should listen. So I guess I would just invite you to sit with Kevin and see if there's anything that we could collaborate on.
Okay.
Does that sound fair?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions or...
Mr. Flanders going?
Questions or suggestions?
I think that's very good.
Okay. Great. Obviously, you do have the background where, you know, we wanna make you feel welcome in your... Back in your hometown.
Yeah.
And if there's anything we can do to help you out, we will.
Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity. Pursue it a little bit, and then we'll see how you feel.
Good. And I just, one other thing I wanted to mention about grants as well. You know, we absolutely recognize the value and absolutely recognize that it does take someone with professional skill sets to both research them to see what's available and to write grants. And at one point in time, because we do, there are a number of people in Fairfield who have these skills and ability, we had a volunteer commission, a grants commission, that did a lot of that for us. It's no longer functioning, but I do take your point that we may be missing something by not having that research being done. And that could be something that we could look at also, if you could bring something to us that we're not aware of.
Then you might be interested in pursuing it.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, and what you need also is somebody with enthusiasm, and I get all enthusiastic about these grant opportunities, and then I offer them to somebody, and they go, "Oh, I don't know."
Well, we get excited about them, too. We like free money.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, well, thank you so much. Great time.
Okay. Next, counsel, we have approved the parade route for the Fairfield High School prom. And is there someone here representing the high school for that?
You're not making the girls do it?
Can't believe it's that time of year already. It's still snowing.
It's early prom this year.
Okay.
So we are holding our prom on April 6th, and we'd like to have a prom parade, as we have in past years, that goes down Broadway until we get to Main Street, and then turn and go to the Civic Center. We're going to need some help from the police with some traffic things, and we may need some barricades to block off some areas. We just wanted to get approval for that. It would start at 8:00 and be done at approximately 9:30.
Okay. And you would also need setup time, so there would probably be a few hours earlier.
Correct.
Okay. And Chief, this is the same route that we've used in the past, and that would be something you would approve?
Yes.
And also commit our officers to?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, obviously, this is something that has a great tradition in Fairfield, and we would wanna see it continue. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Boyer.
Second.
Seconded by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great, I hope you have warm weather.
Better fingers, crowd.
Thank you for the bark.
Thank you. Thank you. I feel like a snoopy.
Okay. This council will move to our resolutions, action items and ordinances. The first is a resolution to set a public hearing date for rezoning of 809 West Taylor Avenue. This was discussed at the planning and zoning meeting just prior to our meeting this evening. So we would... Kevin, I don't know if there's anything to report from that meeting regarding this zoning. We are simply just setting the public hearing and the time, so...
Yes, indeed.
Give us a little background.
Well, this, John Cooster is actually here. Maplewood Apartments LLC would wish to take on the former Nelson Nursing Home, remodel that for multifamily housing. So we did, as you stated, Your Honor, we actually are just setting a time and a date for a public hearing, but I would say that there were a couple of objections to that. They were related... I don't know if those individuals are here. I'm not seeing one individual in particular, but they... The objections were related to density of traffic, basically. There's a lot of kids that live in the area, so there was some worry to that effect. We did not... Some of the statements that some of the council or the commission members made were that they did not feel that there would be an overabundance of more traffic as a result of this, maybe perhaps even less. Lack of delivery trucks being cited is perhaps one of those reasons, as well as other institutional uses and the kind of thing, the kind of traffic that institutional uses bring on. There was a recommendation to agree to rezone from R2 to R3 for this use.
Okay. So we'll set public hearing for April 8th?
So moved by Revulinski?
Second.
Seconded by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And next, we also have a resolution to set a public hearing date for the rezoning of 2125 Libertyville Road.
Yes, Your Honor, this would be for a commercial use zoning from R1 to V2. We feel quite hopeful there will be commerciality to this lot, and that this is an appropriate move. We've been talking to the hospital about sewer line extension there that the hospital had done for their development. I think, I do believe that went on their agenda tonight. I don't know how that went, but I know our conversations have been going very well. But the recommendation from the council or commission was indeed to rezone from R1 to V2.
Okay, thank you.
Move to set the public hearing for April 8th?
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, seconded by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, counsel, on your agenda, we have a public hearing regarding the creation of a TIF district. I think for this evening's meeting, we're not really ready to proceed with anything in particular, but we would like to ask John Morrissey to give us an update, a status update on the work that's going on there. John?
This concerns the West 34 near Walmart, Community First Development. And we've been working on revising what we gave you a meeting ago as far as a preliminary draft of the Urban Renewal Plan. There are some other things being added to that. The plan should be here for you to review and approve on the 9th, tentatively. Then it has to go through a consult notice to our other taxing... Then it has to go through a consult notice to our other taxing entities, and that will go out on the 10th of April. There'll be a consult meeting, hopefully, within the next seven days. After that, it goes to Planning and Zoning right after the consult, and then we'll be back for a public hearing notice that you'll do on the 25th, hopefully, if everything's gone well up to that point. The publication and the requirements mean that we're probably not going to have a discussion of this that goes through two of your meetings until May 14th, which is when you can, at the earliest statutory time, approve the urban renewal plan, the map, and get on in the next day after that, if you want, with discussion of TIF. And this is all time-sensitive to what the development project wants to have happen. We expect they may have a groundbreaking in mid-April, but we're trying to stage this so that they're not going to be ahead of us on what they can agree with us to do to benefit from the TIF. And that means, basically, they can do some teardown and some dirt work before mid-May, when we get our part of the legal requirements done. So, we're running as fast as we can, that schedule, if everything goes as the statute allows, and you want to do this, and approve it, we'll be up and running for the rest of the TIF by mid-May. So that's what we're doing.
Great, thank you, John. So the next item on the agenda, which is the resolution approving the TIF district, is something that we will just table at this time. We'll move then to a public hearing regarding nuisance abatements and unpaid services. Before you do, counsel, on the unpaid services, there were three property owners that were addressed in this, and one of the property owners was not able to be here tonight, and had asked if we would table this, and then upon discussion before the meeting, we decided that we're actually going to move this, these to committee, Darren, so we'd like to just move those concerns to utilities committee.
Okay.
For review and recommendation back to the council, because they do involve some work that we did under the ground at these properties, and we can just have that researched before we deal with them. So I know the Papans are here tonight, and they were one of the parties that was interested in, so we'll schedule a meeting and have you meet with their committee.
All right.
Me too. I don't want to be left out, because I got late notifications, so will you let me know too?
Sure, well, we, yeah, at the end of the meeting, if you just give your name, and we'll make sure that you're notified for that meeting as well. Okay, thanks. So, let's look at the nuisance abatements, which are a series of unpaid charges for mowing and brush removal. I think, I believe there are 13 property owners that are delinquent on these nuisance charges. So this is a public hearing, we'll open the public hearing at this time, and if there's anyone that would like to address those charges, do so at this time. Seeing no one wishing to address these, we'll close the public hearing, and then the action by the counsel then would be to certify these, so that they would go on the tax collection, there would be a lien on the property for these charges. So entertain a motion then to approve certification of the 13 delinquent nuisance charges.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Not pleased, call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revelinsky?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next counsel is the third and final reading for our beach ordinance at Waterworks Park and Bonnefield Lake. That's a public hearing, so I'll open it at this time, if there's any public comment on the proposed ordinance. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and ask if counsel has received any feedback, or are there any amendments to the ordinance as it stands now?
I just didn't see the amendment from last time on this version.
The language.
Those two words that we added.
Yeah.
There, yes, there should be.
An E.
Or.
Or on.
Or on.
Adjacent to or on the beach, was what we, speaking sure, you know, all that hard work we put into those two words, I wouldn't want that to get passed out now.
You don't have two more words this week? Yes, Your Honor.
I have a couple. None of it half expecting, maybe a little.
I would apologize to counsel, on E, the City of Fairfield will have emergency rescue equipment adjacent to or on the beach, that should read. I'm sorry you don't have the copy on your digital record here, but that is indeed actually what the ordinance states.
Okay. Joy, will you get that amended for us, so that, and and or, five letters?
Kevin, do that.
And a space.
She's gonna have. I'm gonna want the digital copy.
All right.
I went on vacation, Your Honor.
Get you covered, no problem. Okay, as previously amended, is there a motion to pass from the third and final reading?
So moved.
Moved by Boyer.
Second.
Second by Revelinsky. Any discussion? Not pleased, call the roll.
Boyer?
Yes.
Revelinsky?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next counsel, we're moving on to two action items regarding, I believe, items that were discussed in the Public Safety and Transportation Committee meeting. I know that Jessica's not here this evening, is there someone that would want to introduce those two items?
Sure. Our last Public Safety Transportation Committee meeting, we met with several residents who live on Southview Circle, and we discussed the parking issue, and they all understood the need to remove parking from one side of the street or the other, to allow emergency vehicles, garbage collection vehicles, et cetera. So it was basically a matter of which side of the street. They chose kind of straw poll to have no parking on the east side, and then we just wanted to have Daryl check to make sure that that was the side that had less parking space, and he did, and it was, so that's the side we're recommending to close. Then they want to move all the mailboxes to that side, so that the mail delivery won't be blocked by the cars on the other side. So everyone's in agreement. The only other thing the city is responsible for is sending a letter explaining the steps if somebody were to want to create off-street parking, how to cut and grind the curb properly, so that they could have additional parking off the street. So I think Kevin just wanted that counsel to do, to make action, so that he could go ahead and get the wording to change the ordinance.
Okay. So a motion then to approve no parking on the east side?
So moved.
Moved by Hallie?
Second.
Second by Boyer. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I've had some contact with some other residents and weren't able to be at the meeting, and there are some objections to this. I know it was cited that the garbage collection was unable to get down the street, and there was concern as to whether emergency vehicles would be able to get down the street if conditions remain the same. I don't believe that there's ever been a complaint prior to this one piece of equipment being parked on the street, that there was an inability for garbage collection to take place. And these residents pointed that out to me, that if it wasn't for a particular vehicle, a construction work-type vehicle that's parked on that street, there wouldn't be a necessity to change the parking conditions, to have no parking. The other concern that they had is, is a lot of the parking congestion that happens right now down on that street is multi-vehicles per household. And within the next two years or so, you're going to see a lot of those disappear, because a lot of those belong to 16 and 17-year-old kids that live at home with their parents, and when they go off to college, or they move away from home, those vehicles tend to disappear. I saw the same thing happen over on my block, which is just directly to the west. And it seems, while it seems rather extreme to put in no parking out there, it is a good recommendation, but it needs a little bit more consideration, I think, of all the property owners that are down there, because, again, the main crux to the problem is one vehicle that's used for a commercial purpose that has caused this. And if you want to disrupt an entire neighborhood because of one vehicle, that's a little extreme.
Well, we're aware of that vehicle, and ask the owner not to park down there, and he's complying for the most part. But our understanding was, it was much more than that, and that the police were being called down between two neighbors, that we saw a little bit of that, even our committee meeting.
Well, there's always.
Unfriendliness there.
In-squabbling between neighbors in a block, but, I mean, it's kind of tough to think that we would disrupt an entire neighborhood because of squabbling between two neighbors.
Well.
You know, I just have a hard time.
Fire Chief Vaughn.
Rectifying that.
We talked about this, wasn't it, your understanding that even if they're just regular sedans on either side of the road, that it's still too narrow for your truck?
Pretty tight.
So that was a concern, it's not just that commercial vehicle.
Well, I'm in the same boat.
Hope your house doesn't get on fire.
Well, no, because our street doesn't have, my son is like the lone teen driver down my street now, and while we're going to have some of that coming up within the next 10 years, it's going to take 10 years for the kids at the end of the street to grow up, to be drivers, you know?
I mean, you did the same thing with South Second, though, between Harrison and Fillmore. You took it off the east side.
Yeah, we did.
Any other discussion?
And that is a through street, though, where this is a cul-de-sac. So, I don't know, that's the input that I received, that's.
No, I appreciate that, Darren.
An expression that I needed to convey to the rest of the council, so.
Okay. Any other points, any other discussion? And there, I don't believe there are any of the other neighbors in the audience that allowed them to speak at this time, but it doesn't appear that there is, so. Then we'll call the roll.
Hallie?
What's the motion again?
Motion to approve.
To no parking on the east side.
Parking on the side of the street.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Revelinsky?
Yes.
Hamilton?
No.
Next, also from that meeting, is a prohibition of deer feeding.
Yeah.
Address that.
So the deer overpopulation issue is still unresolved at this point. We tried to have Bob Lyons do a flyover in his plane to do a count, but he explained later, you can't get low enough in a plane, by law, to really get a good view of what's going on. He did his best, but it was hard to really assess. So we may still do a helicopter count at some point, but we need to find where the money for that would come from. In the meantime, it's come to our attention, there are people who actually feed the deer in town, and it's really not a good idea. We don't want to bring wild animals of that size into the city where they can get hit by cars and eat people's precious plants. So, we're going to start with prohibiting deer feeding within city limits, just as a first step. And again, Kevin wanted action from the council before he crafted such an ordinance.
So what would it, what would you, what do you, how do you define deer feed?
How do you know if it's a squirrel or a deer going to eat it, you know? I mean, can you leave corn out for your squirrel?
You can leave food out for a squirrel, yeah.
And what if the deer eat it, then you get it fined?
You know, it's, it's, it's a first step, come on now.
There are locations around that people have set up what they call.
Salt licks.
Deer plots, where they put out salt licks like that. They do like the deer coming around. Just tonight, coming home with my wife from eating out, we counted eight deer run across the road directly in front of us when we turned off Liberty Drive to Southview Drive. And that's not uncommon at all down in that area. Now deer will stand up on their back legs, and they'll eat bird seed out of a bird feeder, they'll eat leaves off of trees that are low-hanging. You know, I think.
I guess that's.
The ten of the ordinance would probably be, if you specifically set something up that attracts deer for feeding, then that would be what we would look at prohibiting. But I don't see how you could prohibit somebody from feeding squirrels, or other small animals like that, or birds, you know? I've even watched them lick the sugar from the honey, hummingbird feeder in my neighbor's backyard, so, you know, it's, the definition of it's going to be.
I'd have to bring up equal protection, Your Honor. I would ask, Your Honor, if you, we could have John speak to it just for a second, since he was the one who's actually drafted on the ordinance.
Get a legal definition of deer feed, I have to hear this one.
What we're going to do, we'll take a Cabela's catalog, and there will be at least two pages of devices.
Okay.
That are bait, and that will probably be what we focus on.
Okay, that makes more sense, bait devices, then, that's good, okay.
And it's the principle of the matter, you know, we're just trying to send a message, hey, it's not encourage the animals to come in the city. Because the thing is, from what we learned from our friend at the DNR, that the reason they come into city limits is there's food, intentional or unintentional, and it's safe, there are no predators. So if we did, at some point, do a very controlled deer bowhunting program that was in unpopulated areas, you'd probably get what's happened at Jeffers County Park, where after two years the deer don't go in there anymore. They, they're not stupid.
Well, don't go into the allowed hunting.
They don't go into hunting area anymore, so, you know, maybe they'd start to leave.
They learn pretty quick.
Okay. Good. And Kevin, what action did you want on this tonight?
I was looking for a motion to go forward with the ordinance, should we ride it, if that was the counsel's pleasure?
To direct, okay, to direct our city attorney to craft an ordinance prohibiting deer feeding.
Yes.
Okay. Entertainer motion.
So moved.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
One opposed? So it's 5-1. Okay, and then next. So the mayor's report, I just wanted to draw attention to a couple of things. One, we did within the last couple of weeks launch our city government Facebook page. I think it has already proven to be useful within the community for getting information out. I don't know what our number is of followers up to this point, it was like 1,300 or so the last time I looked, but it has, it has already begun to serve a purpose, and it hasn't been abused either, which has been fun to see, to this point. Maybe not enough have discovered it, but I think it is going to be a useful tool for us. Also, as you are all aware, last Thursday, we did learn that the Smithsonian Magazine had named Fairfield the, in its top 10, so we were number seven in cities in America, best places to visit, so should be a good couple of years for us with that publicity. It was, it was an interesting time of hosting the woman who wrote the article and did the research on the 20 cities, because it was determined through prior research that Fairfield would be one of the 20. But her visits to each of them was to determine who would make the top 10, because the top 10 cities are going to go into the print version of the magazine, which will be a more extended article, and more pictures. The photographer was here for three days, so we expect that'll be a really nice piece for us, and when we've had that done before, it's good to have some of those off-paints made, and we have a nice promotional piece, so it was, it was a good outcome on a day that was probably no better than yesterday, as far as weather. It was cold and sleeting, and we were holding her elbows everywhere she went, so she didn't fall. So anyway, it was, congratulations to everyone, because it really is, I think, a testimony to all the work that this council, past councils, Economic Development Association, CBB, everyone involved with the kinds of tourism infrastructure amenities that we've put in place over the last 10 years, so congratulations to everyone. And also, tomorrow at lunch, we will have our final Blue Zone preparation meeting, we'll be putting the. We'll be putting the finishing touches on this written document that'll come out in April. That will be the launch of our Blue Zone project. I think the whole community will have an opportunity to learn a lot more about it. We have 20 work sites, two grocery stores, eight restaurants, two of our schools that are all participating in some way, so I think it's going to be exciting once that is really unfolded to the whole community. And we understand what it is that we're going to do to finish the certification for the Blue Zone, and again, have that accomplished as well, so big year ahead. And it appears that ragby planning is going very well also, so as I say, once the weather warms up, we're going to be busy. We'll move on to our committee and board reports, Economic Development Committee. Connie?
Yes, we met last week. Tracy Vance was there to explain the project, and it's really a continuation of John's discussion regarding this urban renewal in the TIF district where Jefferson County Community Credit Union is building. They are going to be rebuilding their building, and the idea is that that building will actually be a little bit west and north from where it currently sits, and potentially, there will be kind of a new configuration into the Walmart parking lot, and then an extension east of Walmart with a road built from the proceeds of that TIF district. Also, an apron across the road from that Walmart entrance so that in the future, there could be a traffic light there. And what that does is open up the land that's behind the credit union, and east of the Walmart, there is green space there, or it's being farmed right now, and then that goes clear down further east, and again, that's empty ground right now that could further be developed, a second layer behind Burlington. I think the, the consensus of the committee was that it looked like a very good project for future development, right within the city of Fairfield and, and close in, out to the new, by the new Walmart, and so we, we really like the project going forward, and we suggest that the council look forward to more about it and approve it when, when it's appropriate.
Great, thanks, Connie. Our city administrator report, Kevin?
Yes, Your Honor, I would just like to say that we had a very good meeting recently, of course, a singular meeting with Carl A. Nelson, heading into what will be further work on our recreation projects, both of those projects, and we would concur with our committee, our task force, steering committee, in recommending that the city hire Carl A. Nelson to do our, our project. We, we do understand that there will have to be a, an architect, an engineer that is an architect to sign off on plans for that. Carl A. does not have anyone on staff that will be able to actually sign those engineered documents, stamp those documents, but we nevertheless do agree with the committee that it would be the, the best choice for the city and in the best interest of our citizens for these projects.
Thank you. And this is the construction management company that was originally interviewed and vetted by the task force, the Pool and Recreation Task Force, and then Kevin had a follow-up meeting with them, as the interface would be directly with, with our city, so you want, you want a, a motion from the council approving? We don't have a contract or anything that we're, they're actually approving at this point, but.
I do have a, actually, Your Honor, I do have a contract that we're looking at, and looking at the verbiage, but we don't, we don't have a finalized contract yet.
Do you want to wait then till we have that for approval?
I'd like to have, I wouldn't mind having council approval to approach putting that contract definitively together, and I'll bring that back, council sign off on that once we do have it, okay?
Did we not already vote on that?
Yeah.
Couple, yeah, last time, the tiny four, I mean, the last month or so? We already did.
The idea of having a discussion concerning it, but I didn't, we didn't forward our recommendation to actually agree to actually do the hiring, but at this point, we would, we would do that.
I think last time it was to allow Kevin to discuss potentially hiring.
I would move that we.
A motion to direct Kevin to formulate, formulate a contract with Carl A. Nelson.
Thank you.
Moved by Revolinsky, second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll. Yes.
Can I just, one question?
Sure.
Do we have any idea on how fundraising is going?
Very well.
I mean, do we have a number?
The last number that I had is probably about two and a half.
Three million was the last number that they had, but I know they're, they haven't, they haven't met in several weeks, so I think they, they have some meetings coming up.
April 2nd.
April 2nd, where I think there'll be more of a report.
I see. So you're saying they have, they raised 3 million?
Three million committed in pledges.
Okay.
Right, and I think, we believe 1 million in the bank. And I think the last, since the last time we discussed it, the county has approved putting a $1 million bond measure on, in August, and there is, you know, there's still a lot of ongoing fundraising that's, that's taking place right now, but I don't know when there, I would expect an update on April 2nd.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, I'd just, Your Honor, I'd like to say that meeting is at 7:30 in the morning at DDNT, and on April 2nd.
Thank you. So we'll call the roll, Joy?
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. So before we adjourn, let's remind everyone that on April 2nd, the polls will be open for the school bond issue. All, all of the poll areas will be open in Fairfield. Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Boyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?